Okay, just one moment, please.
Councilmember Regenbach? Hello?
I apologize, let me try this one more time, okay? Oh, no, it's not you, it's not you, just one moment. And then transfer again?
That's what he said.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Tim? Okay, just one moment, we're still trying to figure it out. So what did he say?
He said to hit Transfer at the button up top and then Transfer again.
What does that mean? I don't know what that means. This one?
Yeah, he said to hit Transfer at the button up top and then Transfer again.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Okay, we're gonna try it again. I apologize.
Okay, so it's Transfer first.
Okay, go ahead. Are you trying to get a hold of him?
I hit Tab to bugger again, I couldn't get a hold of Cory. So we're trying to Transfer, uh, Councilman Regenbach, and it's not working, so I hit Transfer, yeah, got him on hold right now. Okay. Oh, it is the 2190 one? Okay. Okay. Alright, so hit, so hit, and then.
Okay, here we go.
Now, now, let me try, you should be in, is what?
Councilmember Regenbach?
It's not showing the call on the phone anymore. Okay, so we shouldn't see the... Okay, he said you should be able to... Peterson said you should be able to hang up the phone and you should be able to talk into the microphone. You should be transferring into the system.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Everyone just bear with us for a few minutes, we're trying to address a technical issue.
His mic, does it need to be unlocked, his mic?
Alright, uh, does anything else need to be done, cause like his door thing is locked.
So do you hear anything when I transfer you? The last time, did you hear anything?
Okay, so it's Transfer the 2190, then Transfer. Okay. Alright. Yep.
Oh, you did hear that, did you hear me say your name? Oh, you did? But we didn't hear you, let's try it again. Okay, just one moment.
Councilmember Regenbach, can you hear us? Hello? We cannot hear you, can you hear us? Councilmember Regenbach? Hello?
I suppose we could do that.
Councilmember Regenbach?
John, John, analog is the wave of the future.
Um, that is another idea we can do, I'm gonna try one more number. He said he can hear us loud and clear. It's just we can't hear him, and I don't know why. Yeah. He said we could use his cellphone and hold it up to our mic if we need to. Okay, we're gonna try this one more time, and if it doesn't work, we're just gonna have you call it on a cellphone and we'll hold you up to a mic, okay? Okay, just one, just one moment.
Councilmember Regenbach? Hello? I'm sure you can hear us, but we can't hear you, so we'll try the other way.
For some reason, we're not able to hear you, so I think someone's gonna give you a call and we'll just hold the phone up to the mic. Okay, just one moment, please. Alright, sure. Well, we can try it here. I can hold him, I'll, we'll just use his cellphone and see if it works.
Okay.
Oops. Councilmember Regenbach? Are you there? Okay, Tim, we'll go ahead and we'll put you on, um, conference, okay, just one moment. Okay.
Get him on speakerphone, okay, thank you. Sorry, everyone, for the delay. Uh, good evening, it is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, August the 16th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting, special meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone in our city council audience, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Like to welcome the audience watching via cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open, please call the roll.
Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Kelly.
Sure.
Councilmember Euler. Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel. And Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
We have a Corin present, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. Please join me, everyone, and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Twenty-two dash two-eight-four is a communication from the mayor and interim corporation council with a request to approve the declaration of local state of emergency.
Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilwoman Jackson, uh, seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Regenbach?
Councilmember Regenbach?
I, I, I am getting a little bit static, I really can't hear what's going on.
You can't hear?
I, I did not hear anything from the Councilwoman Regenbach, but I have no idea what that was in regards to.
I'm sorry, it's regarding the declaration of local state of emergency?
I'll vote aye on that.
Motion passes unanimously. Is, is he able to hear me?
Are you able to hear what's going on in the council chambers? Okay, okay.
Unable?
Yeah. He's unable to hear what's going on.
Okay. Gotta keep, keep going.
Can you hear me? You know what, you, you are cutting out, you keep cutting out. I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, and you keep cutting out on my end, I can hardly hear you. Yeah, that's right, that's right. Did you want me to try to keep you on speakerphone, you wanna try it? Okay. Okay, alright, that sounds good, thank you, I'll put you on speaker. He's going to continue to try, but he's not sure he'll be able to hear the whole conversation.
Okay.
We are at twenty-two dash two-eight-five, a communication from the city manager and finance director with a request to hold a policy session on the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, and we will need a motion to open the policy session.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Uh, any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Regenbach?
Councilmember Regenbach, we're opening the, the policy session?
I'm in for a fast, but I'm gonna have to hang up because this is pointless.
Okay, I apologize, thank you.
Did he vote yes?
He, he voted yes, but he will not be here for the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Manager?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. What we wanted to do this evening, and we do have a slide deck that we're gonna walk through, is to get some initial feedback from the, the council pertaining to the American Rescue Plan funds. We are in the, the process of preparing the budget and the revised 2023 budget, which is the second year of our budget biennial. And so what we wanna do is, we wanna make sure that we have, uh, some feedback from you, uh, as far as how we want to go about allocating and spending those dollars. So as soon as we get the, the slide deck up on the screen, we'll, we'll start the, the, the presentation. I'll, I'll cover some of the, the initial items pretty quickly, which is what I was planning on doing anyways. As you know, the, the, uh, uh, American Rescue Plan funds and the, and the coronavirus relief fiscal recovery funds were designed to, to cover four key funding objectives from the federal government. First, to support the urgent COVID-19 response efforts. Second, to replace public sector, uh, lost public sector revenue. Third, to support the immediate economic stabilization, uh, for household businesses. And then fourth, to address systemic public health and economic challenges that are as a result of the pandemic. In that regard, they had six, uh, eligible uses of those state and local, um, uh, fiscal recovery funds. The first was to support the public health response. The second was to address the negative economic impacts. The third was to replace public sector revenue loss. The fourth was premium pay for essential workers. The fifth was water and sewer infrastructure. And then the sixth would be for broadband infrastructure. In addition, the, um, the fiscal recovery funds provided additional flexibility within areas that are, are considered to be the most hardest hit in our communities. And what the federal government defined as the hardest hit are those areas that are within qualified census tracts. These are areas where, uh, the economic distress is, uh, has been largest and it's the most disproportionately impacted. And in Peoria, it's basically everywhere south of McClure, um, except for the, the precinct or Census Track 20, which is around the uplands, so, and kind of in that area there. So it excludes that, that, um, census tract, but everywhere else, it, it does cover that and does go forward. So again, McClure South is the area that we're talking about. And so within those equity-focused services, um, what it, they did provide some additional flexibility, the first being to address, uh, health disparities. Uh, so that could be, um, looking at lead paint remediation, it could be community violence intervention programs, it could be, uh, community health workers. Uh, it could be housing in neighborhoods, people that are experiencing homelessness, affordable housing development, housing vouchers, rental counseling, rental assistance, navigation assistance. Could be addressing educational disparities, uh, for new and expanded and early learning programs, uh, expanded resource for high-poverty school districts, or tutoring or after-school programs. Uh, or lastly, it could be for promoting healthy childhood environments. Uh, that would be new and expanded, high-quality childcare, for home visiting programs for families with young children, and services for welfare-involved families. They did in the act define those ineligible uses. Uh, the first being, um, those changes that would reduce our, you know, if, if, if a local government decided to reduce their taxes, uh, that would be ineligible. Uh, any extraordinary payments into pension funds would be ineligible. Any rainy day funds or, or payments into our rainy day funds would be ineligible. Uh, and then lastly, any death service payments that we make. So those were the ineligible uses. As we worked through that, we calculated, uh, according to the act, um, we calculated our lost revenue. How much did we lose in fiscal year 2020? Because that was one of the first categories you could, you could determine, is how much public sector revenue loss did you have? Our calculation, when we worked through the, the, the program that, that the American Rescue Plan talked about, was $20.5 million, exactly $20,561,566. So in 2021, council took the action to set aside $10.3 million of the fiscal recovery funds to replenish that lost revenue. So that was done in 2020, um, or in 2021. That was one of the first actions that this council did with that, was to restore those funds. Uh, we used that to offset our police and fire salaries in 2021. So that's what we did with those dollars. Um, that's the, the information that, that Kyle submitted to the federal government, saying how we spent the first $10.3 million. That means that, that beginning, uh, as we put together the biennial budget, that we have $36.8 million, uh, to allocate. So, uh, those funds have to be spent, um, by, by 12/31/2024, or, uh, have to be appropriated by 12/31/2024, and spent by 12/31/2026. So, um...
Can, can you say that again, alloc, allocated by?
They have to be budgeted by 12/31 of 2024.
Okay.
And they have to be spent by the end of 2026. Whatever isn't spent by the end of 2026 has to be sent back to the federal government.
Okay.
So what council did in, in 2022 and 2023 is, uh, council, as part of the biennial budget, budgeted $13,243,403 in 2022, and then budgeted $12,185,000 in 2023. So as we look at, and what I'd like to do now is, is kind of zero in on, on what we've spent to date, and talk about that, and, and we can focus a little bit on that. That's, uh, going to be on, um, page five in the, in the packet for you. We set aside $6.3 million of the, the fiscal recovery funds in 2022 for infrastructure. We set aside $2.45 million for neighborhoods, $2.4 million for economic development, $600,000 for, uh, health equity, $1.3 million for violence prevention. Um, and then we had $183,000 of marketing program, finance administration costs, uh, just the overall costs. We're anticipating at the end of 2022 that we'll spend about $4.6 million of the infrastructure funding. We'll spend about $2.1 million of the neighborhood funds, $2.4 million of the economic development funds, the $600,000 for health equity, about $731,000 of the violence prevention funds, and about $18,000 of the, of the administration funds. So, um, moving in, and, and this begins on page six, uh, in the packet, slide 11, is, um, looking and zeroing in on the infrastructure. We had set aside $870,000 for sidewalks. But as the, as the, uh, Public Works Department has been working through, uh, their capital budget, and they've been, they've been looking at how to prioritize spending, and just with the bandwidth that the Public Works team has, uh, we're not gonna be able to spend that $870,000 this year on sidewalks. What we'd like to do, though, is come back to you next year and spend $1.676,700,000, so basically doubling up the sidewalk effort when we can get all the design work done and get those funds spent in 2023. So, so in essence, just shifting tho, those dollars into 2023 to be able to spend that, at that point.
The reason that we were not able to spend for sidewalks?
We don't have the econo, we don't have the engineering capacity to get the pro, programs designed with all the, I mean, we have a $60 million capital budget, it's the largest capital budget we've had ever. And so trying to get that throughput, we just don't have the staff to be able to do it. So, so we wanted to be able to push that off till next year, when we will have the time to focus on that project. Um, and it really kind of goes to, to the next two as well. Um, we have $700,000 for street lighting. Uh, those projects for, for street lighting that we had included, um, money for street lighting on Nebraska, which was from Knoxville to Wisconsin, uh, some money for street lighting around Glen Oak. Uh, and those two projects, um, we're not gonna get it all spent, we're, we're gonna end up with about $610,000 of it being spent this year. And then the smart street lighting, um, we're still working with Ameren on the smart street lighting program, and, and, um, we're trying to escalate up into their, their regional, uh, leadership in order to be able to, to talk about how we can, we can work with them and partner with them on, on, uh, smart street lighting in, and particularly alley street lighting. Uh, we seem to have like one step forward, two steps back with them in, in terms of kind of revisiting the wheel. So we, we know that that's something as well that, that we wanna address, but we'd again, would like to just push that, that into next year in terms of the, the $500,000 for that. So, um, on the mill and overlay side, we're gonna spend almost all of that. Uh, we anticipate about $2 million of the mill and overlay work being spent. Uh, we fully anticipate that the Harrison and McKinley, um, demolition costs of $2 million will be spent. Uh, and then we, we don't anticipate on the infrastructure side that there'll be any, any of the administrative costs will be spent this year, so that would be zeroed out. Shifting on into, uh, neighborhood revitalization. Uh, here, we had, had budgeted a million dollars for, uh, demolition and lot clearance. We had, um, $300,000 for land bank operations. We had $400,000 for housing rehabilitation programs. We had budgeted $200,000 for the nonprofit capital assistance program. $250,000 for the down payment assistance program. $100,000 for the neighborhood mini-grants. And then we had administration, uh, just the, the cost of managing those programs at $250,000. We'll spend the full million dollars in demolition, we think that that will be completed. Um, we think about $150,000 will be spent out of the land bank operations. Uh, $250,000 in the housing rehabilitation program. $200,000 in the nonprofit capital program, has already been allocated and, and paid out. Um, $100,000 in the neighborhood, um, mini-grants. $125,000 in the down payment assistance program. And I think that's kind of cooling off with interest rates going up, we're just not seeing as much demand for it. I think Director Doolin, and I'm gonna ask him maybe to come up to the mic and, and just talk about this briefly, would like to implement a new program, uh, just based upon where we're seeing utility costs being so high that we provide some utility assistance work, and so he'd, he'd like to recommend $150,000 this year for utility assistance. Director Doolin, could you talk about that briefly?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mr. Manager. Um, so one of the things that, that our staff has been looking at is, um, we have a strong fear with the raising, rising utility rates about what could happen next March. Um, you know, after a winter of, of a lot of... You know, after a winter of, a lot of times, Ameren doesn't shut electricity or power off in the winter. So, with the rising costs, we're very afraid of what we could see next March with the significant amount of properties being shut off due to high electric bills. So, we took a hard look at what's offered throughout the state and what other programs might be available to residents in Peoria. The state of Illinois, through PCCO, operates a LIHE program, and essentially, that goes up to about 60% of area median income. Most of our programs in the classification with HUD has the low-income residents qualified at 80% of the area median income. So, there's going to be this gap between 60% and 80% of people, 60% of area median income and 80% of area median income who won't qualify specifically for any of the programs that are available. So, what we would propose is launching a utility assistance program for $150,000 of our money we have this year and $150,000 of others of our money next year, and really market it to those who income level falls between that 60 and 80%, where they might not qualify for any of the other programs that exist. So, they could get some utility assistance. So, these residents would have an income. They would be bringing home, you know, they probably live paycheck to paycheck, but they're able to pay their bills. They just, you know, unfortunately, at that income rate, do not have savings built up to adjust to large Ameren bills. So, our program that we would propose would essentially be for those that qualify up to $150 per month credit to their Ameren bill for November, December, January, and February. So, with that funds, we'd be able to help about 500 households in Peoria. And then, we'd really push the other programs that are available to as many residents as possible to get them to utilize those as well. Because in addition to the LIHE program, there are some additional programs that do exist in our community. Our township offers, offers a one-time kind of utility assistance. And then, Ameren has, for that, a little higher income, a one-time utility assistance as well. So, we feel with the staff we have, we can currently roll it out pretty quickly. So, if council gives us the blessing tonight to move forward at the next council meeting, we'd bring kind of those program guidelines so we could get it, start advertising and launch, so it'd be ready to go to help people with utility assistance in November. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the program as well.
Questions? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Doolin, this assistance, is it predicated on the fact that beyond the help we're giving these households? First of all, the credit that a household gets, is that given to the resident, or is that given to Ameren?
The way we have set up, based on our COVID CDBG utility assistance, is essentially Ameren allows us to go in and apply the credit directly to their account.
Okay, so it's, okay. And then, secondly, is there a requirement that the rest of the bill be current as this program goes on? So that in March, they don't get a great big bill?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Other questions? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to make sure, understand, so it's $250,000, correct? Who will manage this program?
It'd be total about $300,000 spread out over the two years, and the community development staff would manage it.
Okay. Is that a duplication of services? Why wouldn't we give that money to the county? And that's not what they have? The county has over $1 million, $2 million, too, for these types of services and bills? I mean, the biggest expense, I think, for the county is Ameren, so-called bills. Why would we give them the money if it's this important? So, we don't duplicate services?
Are you referring to the township programs?
Yeah, I'm sorry, township.
Yeah, so the township does have a program, and essentially, their income cap is about $30,000 regardless of household size, where 80% of area median income is in the kind of $50,000 to $55,000 range. So, our program would specifically target at those who don't fall within the parameters of their program, who are living paycheck to paycheck, who likely can afford the previous Ameren bill, but with the increase, probably needs a little assistance. So, we'd be targeting a different population than qualifies for their program. And one of the parameters of our program would be that you, if you qualified for other assistance, you at least applied and tried to get those as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess as we talk about this topic, I just want to make sure, as we talked about it in a meeting today, is that, do you think that's enough funding for this utility assistance?
It probably is not enough, as with any program we do for assistance. You know, unfortunately, I think a lot of people have a lot of, are going to have a lot of need within our community. I think the dollar amount is a decent-sized dollar amount for the targeted population we are trying to target that are really looking at what's, we tried to look and see what they might see increased and what they could be able to afford. And, you know, I mean, the more we offer, the less people we can help, and vice versa. So, I don't think that answered your question exactly, besides that I'm sure as much utility assistance that we could provide would probably be used. It's just trying to find that window of where the need is and what we can help with. So, that's why kind of this recommendation is, you know, we thought with 500 households, we can make a pretty substantial effort to improve a lot of people in the community who need some additional help.
How many did we serve this past year?
I don't have the off the top of my head. I believe when we launched the COVID utility assistance program, it was a little different. It wasn't a credit to their account. It was essentially paying for past due amounts. Is, I think, based on all the other programs that existed at the time, is 200 or 300, but I can get back to you and let you know that exact amount of how many we served previously.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rodrigo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to piggyback on Councilman Jensen's question because I think I'm going to ask the same question exactly how she asked it. Is this enough money? And thank you for talking about it being stackable. As we know, though, a lot of our hardest hit are maybe in houses that aren't as energy efficient, that their energy bills are not maybe consistent with what a lot of other people may be. And this increase has been extremely large. So, while 150 may sound like a lot of dollars, and it is, the increases could be larger. And I think that's why it's important about the stackable piece. And also, I think you talked this morning about making sure that 2-in-1 is ready to be able to offer other services. But I'm going to go back to the question that Councilmember Jensen asked because I kind of agree with her. Is $150,000 enough? If that's serving 500 people, or 500 households, which is important, if we increase it to 600 households, that takes it to 180,000. And are, you know, by still keeping that at 150, the need is going to be there. What do you see the need? Are we, do we have a value to be able to maybe increase that amount? And I think you're hearing that from two council members to maybe that we ought to increase that a little bit more because this program does have some really good legs to it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, there's a couple ways we can handle that. I think that this will be a unique program in that it's really not necessarily addressing those who are behind. So, it's those who are anticipating a need. So, it creates a few challenges that way. I think what we could do, you know, if council, we could, you know, if we want to increase the amount, we can. I think the other option is we could launch the program, see how many applications we get. And if we needed to come back to council, if council would like to address as many as we can, we could. I think the need will definitely exist in our community of, if we have 500 spots, I bet we get 500 applicants just if we have 700 spots. So, you know, I think, and that's because we are not necessarily waiting for people to fall behind on bills. We're trying to be proactive and trying to give them some additional help. So, I think that would be a policy decision of council of how much they want to fund the program. I think staff, because of our experience with running the utility assistance program through COVID, any amount of money we can, we'll be able to handle. It's just kind of, I think, a decision of council of how much they want to allocate towards it.
So, what I'm hearing is if this is approved in the final budget, that you are willing to come back to us and give us an update about where the application process is and if more money might need to be allocated to it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, where would that money come from, Mr. Manager? Do we have to put additional money in reserve? Or, I mean, how do you see that working if Director Doolin comes back and says we have 200 or 300 more?
Well, I think that you've got a couple of options. One is that you can take it from the other buckets that the council has already allocated for neighborhoods. You could take it from, you know, other areas of the already appropriated American Rescue Plan funds. Or, we can use some of the money that's unspent. And that just means that in the out-years, we'll have less money to spend. And I think that's really the policy discussion, the essence of tonight's policy discussion, is if you see things or hear of things or want something else that, and maybe you don't like what we're recommending, just say, tell us, we don't want that money here. We'd want more in that regard. So, maybe if it is that we want more for utility assistance, tell us in the direction you'd like to do it, and then, we'll build that into the budget that will come back to you here in six weeks.
Sure.
So...
Okay. And Director, does this program require additional staff? I mean, 500 is a lot of people to service.
No, ma'am. I think with the infrastructure we have in place and the experience with the previous programs, plus, I mean, we will be able to handle it.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Doolin, there's a net loss in the budget, you know, budget versus spent, of around $400,000. You know, we've cut land bank operations. We've cut housing rehabilitation. We've cut the down payment assistance program. We've added utility assistance, but we've cut administration. So, that almost is a wash. But we've cut...
Clarify.
How come?
Well, it's not a cut. It's just we haven't, we had it budgeted, we haven't spent it all.
Yes.
So, what we're saying is that as we look at this over a two-year period of time, if you look at the, in the tables, the money that we originally budgeted, it was between '22 and '23, it was about $25.6 million. What we're recommending is about $26 million worth of spending. So, just upping the fiscal recovery funds by about $400,000 over that two-year period of time. In some of these instances, we're just saying we're not spending it through this year. So, let's look at resetting for next year. Some of it may be a carryover, some of it we might not. And then, we'll walk through that in order to be able to still spend the 20, it'll be 26 million if council concurs with that. If you want more in some areas, we'll put more into that, and then, we can focus those efforts in that way. So, it's really, where, I guess what I would say, Councilman, is that that's what we're anticipating will be spent by the end of the year.
So, the answer perhaps is that we've not been able to spend this extra $400,000?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Director Doolin, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. And I apologize if I'm getting a little bit ahead, but Director Doolin is here and the numbers flush out. I see in the 2023 proposed, where we add the 150 for utility assistance, we're taking down 150 for housing rehabilitation. What does that bucket consist of? And why make the decision to take that down?
Yeah, I think part of that is, and this maybe addresses Councilman Kelly's question a little bit, too. We're in a very weird time in community development in the city where I think we have more grants and more funding than we've ever had before. And we've had to adjust staffing-wise to make that happen. And our community development staff and city staff, I think, have done a fantastic job with all of the grants that have been applied for, given, and granted. And then, staffing has just been hard. So, I think that's what we feel like we will be likely to spend in 2023 with a proper program launch. So, that's the only reason for it, not because of the value or anything like that. I think, and while I appreciate homeowners rehab assistance, if we were looking to get to a place where we could have utility assistance and I had to take it from one spot, that would be my recommendation, simply from the fact that, you know, homeowners rehab is great to help 20, 25, 30 houses, but a utility assistance program could potentially keep a lot of people's power on and keep for the future. And then, the long-term health of our neighborhoods, not having, my code inspectors having to go out and post those houses on inadmissible really saves us in the long run. So, just kind of looking and balancing all that together is kind of how we came up with that.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up, and I'm going to call on you, Councilman Allen, but just to follow up on the question asked by Councilmember Euler. You know, I just think we need both. You know, we continue to need the housing rehab. You can ride through certain communities and you see the great need for housing rehab. So, I don't know why we would have to sacrifice one to, in order to support the other. I think that we have to find a way to support both.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Doolin, for bringing this forward and having the foresight. I think we can anticipate that energy costs are going to be a problem for many of our constituents for the foreseeable future, especially when I think of our retired and our elderly citizens who are on fixed incomes. And as things are rising around us, including groceries and gas, if we can provide a little relief, that'd be great. Just a quick question, though, for clarification. For those to be eligible, do they have to live within one of the qualified census tracts? Or is anybody who is, who earns or meets the income deadline or the income base that we're going to set for this?
It'd be citywide. They would be, if they qualify via income, it would be city.
Before I said it, that's what, yes, it would be citywide.
Good.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
To clarify, we have flexibility in the qualified census tracts. But this is a direct expense that, when you talk about people that have been impacted by the pandemic, this would be one area we could point to and say that everyone citywide was impacted by the pandemic. And if you qualify via the income levels, this would meet the requirements of the federal government.
And just on that note, we did talk about it, and it was a good point made this morning when we spoke to some landlords, is that when we do bring the application forward, we'll lay out specifically how we're doing our outreach efforts. We understand that there might be an elderly population who doesn't have internet access. They don't watch the news. They don't see the newspapers. So, the landlords that we met with have graciously said that they would try to reach out to the other landlords to really encourage, if they have an elderly tenant, to get them a paper application and work through it. And we'll work with our nonprofits really to get the message out as much as possible.
Any other questions for Director Doolin? Doesn't look like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
So, the last three areas of the budget that we had set aside was for violence reduction, health equity, and administration. In the budget, we had $735,000 for violence prevention, $500,000 for the hotspot interventions, $65,000 for administration. We had the $600,000 with the Health Department for health equity, and then, about $183,000 for marketing and administration. I think what we'll see is that we're anticipating that we'll allocate $700,000 for violence prevention. Not spending any money on the hotspot intervention for this year, but I'll talk about how we'd like to carry that forward or bring that forward next year. About $30,000 in administration costs, the $600,000 for health equity. And we only think that this year, from a marketing and administration side, we'll be spending about $600,000. So, as I mentioned, what we, looking to '23 now, So, as I mentioned, what we, looking to '23 now, what we'd like to do is talk about some initial recommendations. And again, we are very open to if council wants to make suggestions or additions, subtractions, say, take more here, put more there. That's what we want to know, so that when we craft a proposal and bring it back to you with the budget, that you've got that guidance that you've given us as we prepare the spending plan. So the first item that we have is infrastructure. We've beefed this up from $5.2 million to $8.5. And the first of that was on the sidewalk side. As I mentioned, we've bumped that up to $1.67 million. We have $800,000 for street lighting. That 800,000 would be for the projects, one at Prospect, which is from Forest Hill to London, that's $250,000. And then there's $550,000 for the area around Adams and Garden. If we look at that, there's, we have some concrete light poles there that need to be replaced, and we would look at replacing all of that street lighting in that area. That's about $550,000. So those were the two projects the council had previously approved. So those are included. We have the $500,000 for smart street lighting, you know, so that's there that we would look at carrying that forward. And then on the mill and overlay side, here we're increasing the budget from $960,000, and there's two projects. There's Gale from University to Sheridan, and there is MacArthur from Moss to MLK. And that's the section of, just south of Moss, before you get to the MacArthur Bridge, which is in pretty rough shape right now if you've come down the MacArthur Bridge. Unfortunately, as our engineering team has looked at it, the costs have gone up for both of those projects. The MacArthur cost has gone up about $300,000, and the Gale project has gone up almost $500,000. So in both of those, we're recommending that we still continue those projects, but it's just taking more of those dollars for those two. We had $2 million for Wisconsin Avenue. That's still included in here. And then the new project that we would be looking at recommending is extending a sewer line in northwest Peoria along War Memorial Drive out to Pringle Technologies and the new event center that's going up in that area. That'll open up that area for additional development, if we can provide additional sewer capacity in that area. And we would couple that $1.6 million for that sewer expansion with, knock on wood, if we're lucky, a $600,000 federal earmark from Senator Durbin, who has that in the budget right now. That's awaiting action in Congress, so hopefully that continues to get funded, and we'll go forward, and we'll see an additional $600,000 from the federal government for that sewer line. So that's something that we wanted to recommend. Sewer expenses are a directly attributable expense that it's explicitly called out in the bill, so that would allow us to use the ARP funds for that purpose.
Manager, before you go on, on the Wisconsin Avenue at the $2 million, that's a different project than what we were recently funded, the $3 million.
That is correct. So if you remember, we initially in the budget put Wisconsin Avenue, it was a $12 million project, and that was to redo Wisconsin Avenue from Forest Hill to Republic. As we were doing that, we realized that the Main Street grant opened up through DCEO, and we had the stretch that we weren't able to address, which was from Nebraska to McClure, except for the table in front of Glen Oaks School. So we applied for $3 million for that, and we were successfully awarded that $3 million yesterday. So really, the improvements on Wisconsin Avenue will total about $15 million for that full stretch.
Okay.
And one question that's, I think, still out there for the Public Works team, is we were looking at whether or not, and still trying to analyze whether or not the road base is sufficient that we could just do a mill and overlay here, or if we're going to have to do the full road reconstruction, which gets pricey if we have to do the reconstruction. So that's something, it's a question mark that's still out there on the infrastructure side.
And congratulations on that successful award. $3 million is nothing to sneeze at, so, you know, that was great news.
And very excited that DCEO turned that one around in eight months. We've had a couple that they've taken a lot longer for them to turn around, so that was very good news. But before we go any further, I guess we'd be happy to answer any questions on the infrastructure side. Director Powers is here, and if there's any questions on the infrastructure piece, we'd be happy to answer them.
Director Powers, I think there's going to be some questions. Councilmember Grayup?
Mayor, you asked one of the questions as related to Wisconsin Avenue and the $3 million announcement yesterday, I believe it was. I'm kind of behind where you are on the hotspot aspect. Can you explain that again? We had, and 22, half million dollars budgeted, and we spent zero?
We haven't spent any money on the hotspot, you know, doing place-based interventions yet. I think what we'd like to do is, as we look at the violence prevention funding next year, we still have $1.3 million for that. Again, doing the same thing, looking at $700,000 for violence prevention programming, and then $500,000 in '23 for the hotspot work. That will give the Police Department and the Community Development Department time to work on those interventions and talk about what we're doing.
I don't understand the concept of hotspot as you are describing it.
So where we have heightened criminal activity, what we'd be talking about is working with community development and Public Works and saying, maybe we need more street lighting. Maybe we need to address these properties from an abandoned and vacant standpoint. Maybe there's other code-related issues or public infrastructure-related issues that we need to focus on in those areas where the Police Department has identified high criminal activity, and that they're trying to focus with the neighborhoods on how we can intervene from a built environment standpoint to help them do their job.
So a multidisciplinary?
Yes, sir.
Application, not simply law enforcement?
Yes.
And not to minimize law enforcement, because our number-one, most important violence interruption program is the Peoria Police Department?
It would be driven by the Police Department, working with Public Works and working with community development, to say, we've talked in the neighborhood, to the neighborhood leaders, to the people in the community that are saying, here's some issues that we'd like to see addressed in those specific areas.
Thank you.
Councilman Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, so if you look at the street lighting that is 800,000, and smart lighting, maybe after your debate with AMRAAN, you may find, so we are looking at $1.3 million there. So can I assume that the street lighting or smart lighting would be, I mean, in the heat map what police chief proposed?
There could be. There could be spots where we might put additional resources towards adding more lighting in that area. And the other piece that we have is, we are going to receive this year a grant from Representative Gordon Booth and through DCEO for another $2.5 million for street lighting. That will be more for probably corridor enhancements and looking at where we might be able to do some things throughout the city with some corridors.
So does that mean we are not doing that first? We are waiting for the grant to come in, then we address that?
No. But right now, the Police Department has been identifying, they've been working with community development on identifying abandoned vacant properties in areas where we've seen a lot of criminal activity. But in addition, they're going to be doing more. They're going to be, they're going to be going out, like they've done with their walk and talks, they're going to be getting out and talking to neighborhoods and neighborhood leaders and residents in those areas. Chief, do you want to come up and talk about that for a little bit? But there's more street lighting, I think, we can do within that violence prevention program. And then we have the two streetlight projects that we talked about, one on Prospect, and then the other was down in the Adams Garden area, southwest Adams Garden area. And then we'd have the smart street lighting project that we want to continue to rule that out. That we have to, that we really have to work with AMRAAN to try and get that implemented.
Baby, I have to tell you this. You told me a very big explanation, but I didn't get it. My question is very simple. So the money that we are going to allocate, are they going to light up the dark areas that police chief identified?
So what we're currently doing is, we're looking at our data, and we're going to go back 10 years to compare where our hotspots have been for the last 10 years. How far have they moved? Have they moved? Are they still in the same place? If you look at the map, which I don't have here, you're going to see four real red hotspots in the city. That's where most of our violence is being driven, right? In those areas. So what we're going to do is zoom into those areas, look at the 100 blocks, find the champions of those neighborhoods, the clergy members of those neighborhoods, the business owners, the nonprofits, bring them all in the same room, and have the conversation of, what are we seeing in these areas? Bringing in Public Works, community development, the Fire Department, AMRAAN, et cetera, to then look at where are the alleys that are dark in those areas? Where are the potholes that we're seeing in those areas? Why the main breaks that may be in those areas? All these small, abandoned vehicles on the street, abandoned vehicles on private property, properties that need to be demolished because there's crime infested, they're empty, they're being used for prostitution, for drug use, et cetera. And really start working at that lower level, if you will, on these, they're not smaller, but these other issues that are in the community, so that community can take ownership as well. If we show that we care about those little things, those quality of life issues, that we may not see in our own neighborhoods, but in some of these other neighborhoods, and then start correcting those things and empowering these neighborhoods to start taking ownership and opening up those lines of communication, but getting the lighting and everything else that's in those areas. Does that make, I hope that made sense?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And Chief, would you send that hotspot map to council?
Yeah, so I should have, we're getting the 10 years, so once we have the 10 years, I can send you the one now, but we're going to get, we're going to collect all 10 years, and you'll get all of that.
Okay.
To see where the hotspots have moved or not moved. That came from the meeting last Friday that was requested, so we're working on getting that, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Yes. So in the neighborhoods, we're recommending two-point, well, I guess, are there any other questions?
We've got some more questions. We've got some more questions, I think, maybe for the Director.
We'd possibly even expound in the First District as to what we're trying to do with smart lighting in regard to what the chief was just addressing, if you'd like. I mean, that's your?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Your prerogative, Mr. Commissioner. So sort of to expound on what the chief was just saying, we have already done a heat map within the First District recently, going back to what the manager addressed with some of the smart lighting initiatives. However, those areas are all AMRAAN-controlled areas, and they're proprietary, and hence smart lighting. Smart lighting isn't just lighting. That's more toward the Representative John Gordon Booth's money that we believe we're going to find, which will help us. In fact, I don't know how much the manager has shared in that regard, but we want to just basically beef up lighting projects citywide with those dollars, standard lighting. When you think smart lighting, those illegal dumping sites the chief was talking about, the high crime areas, we've already focused within the First District in some of the qualified census tracts, which is where we wanted to focus the $500,000 this first year. The collaborative effort with AMRAAN is, they really don't want us putting technologies, if you will, that would be smart lighting, thinking bright to dim, cameras, heat sensing. I mean, they, smart lighting is really smart. I mean, you can do a lot of things with a node on the end of a mastar. There's, and you can buy them online. I mean, you can pretty much Google it, and you see the technology. So we are trying to work with them relative to liabilities, things along those lines, to address where we know some areas already are on the smart lighting side. So I want to sort of separate those two points of the 2.5 million that we hope just to address corridor-wise, project beef-up, so on. That's our hope for those dollars. The $500,000, we truly want to integrate into crime fighting, into dealing with illegal dumping, dark alleys, bright-to-dim type of lighting, where it's truly smart lighting, whereas it's not intrusive. If it activates, it may activate a camera on a node on the bottom of the sensor and broadcast to the ECC. We're thinking forward to truly smart lighting. So that's some of the delay, really, that's going forward in that regard, and why we want to carry it forward, because we need, as the manager's already indicated, to get with AMRAAN at a higher level of management to truly put our hands together and open that up, because they're not our poles. That's the bottom line.
Yeah.
So I hope that helped clear up some of what the chief was trying to say when he was saying hotspots. We want to focus in those crime areas with those dollars. Does that answer your question, sir? All right.
They're not our poles yet.
I know. I'm still here, Mayor. Thank you.
Sorry. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the Public Works Director just kind of answered some of the questions, and I hope that the meeting with AMRAAN will take place sooner rather than later, because, as you know, we have identified many areas throughout the city where there's been an awful lot of illegal dumping and other criminal activity that has taken place in alleys and areas all around. So given the fact that we've got to spend this money sooner rather than later, you know, it would behoove us to get AMRAAN at the table and see what they're going to do so that we can move this forward as quickly as possible. And the other question I had, I don't know if it's so much in infrastructure, but I was just sitting here wondering, the city manager talked about the engineering problem. What are we doing to make sure we have the staffing available in 2023 to address this engineering, lack of engineers, so that we can move the capital projects forward?
Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you, ma'am. Council, we're actually working, the throughput that we have, some of it is an engineering challenge, but this is an industry-level engineering. It's not Public Works Peoria. This is, if you are a PE today, that's what they used to say about nursing, you could go anywhere today, just because the amount of money that is available is unprecedented. So engineering firms nationwide are demanding PEs. So our throughput, even, and we're using consultants, keep that in mind, so they have staff beyond what our means were formerly, and we are challenging their bandwidth, because, keep in mind now, IDOT is letting jobs, other municipalities are letting jobs, so we are another customer. So to your point, we are a customer, we're putting the money out, and what the manager said earlier, jobs are simply going to bid higher. Inflation is, because they can hold out, they can work for anyone. So what we expect to see is, and we've been seeing this, anywhere from 30% to 50% increases in our estimates. And where they're coming back, the bottom line is, they're not selling, or we're putting them out to bid, and nobody's picking them up. So that's the engineering challenge, really, that we're facing, is just, we're not able to reach that throughput, to get that added engineering work on top, to get the job back out the door to rebid. So that is what we are doing. We are likely going to spend more money, Council.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was the same question I was going to ask. So thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Thank you, Director. That's all.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Powers, this is, this could be an unfair question for you, but what's your assessment, or how do you rate the, I'm going to call it the silos system? We started last year with all our engineers, and I thought the reason we did that, we would have plenty of engineers and plenty of firms in Peoria and around Peoria. Is this system working? I mean, you know what I'm talking about, last year we started that?
Actually...
Is this working correctly?
Absolutely.
Or can we do better?
This, no, I would say the successes we have is because we've done that. I sort of brushed over that just a few minutes ago, but I probably should have expounded. Actually, what we did by going to the model we have now is took the silos away. In other words, you had one person. That would have been a major bandwidth problem. If we were trying to do this in-house, we would not have capacity. Today, those areas where we have a program manager overseeing stormwater, consent decree, traffic, and what am I missing? Construction, they have the full force of their firm behind them. So whatever we throw them, they do it, but they tell us, we get an invoice. Bottom line is, we get their full firm's bandwidth. So it's working very well, but keep in mind, we are competitive, we are competing in that engineering market, which is exactly what we knew would be doing, but we have more bandwidth as a result, so it's actually working better than what we had, meaning throughput. We're actually putting through more than IDOT is.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Grayup?
Well, again, I think I'm still on the hotspots. Perhaps I should direct this to our police superintendent. Are you our police superintendent?
I am not.
You can stay right there, because you're part of it. You're going to be part of this, sir. I guarantee you.
We're both Marines, anyway. We'll handle it. I apologize. It's hard to hear back there.
No, that's okay. Here's my problem. You stated that we're going to somehow bring together all the stakeholders in a hotspot area, and those hotspots may have changed from what they were a year ago, two years ago, five years ago, 10 years ago. We're going to ask them what the problems are in their We're gonna ask them what the problems are in their community. And then we're gonna be better able to concentrate our city assets to those areas to resolve their problems. Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, yes, that's part of it, correct. We, obviously, we have the data of what's going on in that area. So, we will also bring the data of what we're seeing, what violence, what crime, what trends we're seeing in that area. And in communication with them, we're gonna figure out what are the next steps to get them to, so we can empower those neighborhoods to continue to conversate with us, share information, et cetera.
Chief, I think I know where those neighborhoods are. We've had meeting after meeting after meeting. How will your meeting be different from the previous meetings other people have had? Councilmembers, clergy, et cetera. What's gonna be different this time?
I don't know what other meetings you've had in the past. I've been here a year. What I know is, when we do our walk-in talks, what we're gonna move forward is, they're gonna be with us, fire's gonna be with us, community development's gonna be with us. And what I wanna do is, we're gonna see the problem and we wanna immediately make an effect in that area. So, we walk through the neighborhood with the community, there's a pothole. How do we get this pothole fixed? There's a light that's out. Let's get this light fixed within that first week.
I, I understand that.
Right.
But there's a history to Peoria. We've done this before. This is not gonna be anything that's colossally new. We've had problem-oriented property teams go out. We've saturated neighborhoods with everything imaginable, including paws to clean up areas. I can't believe that we haven't been doing a lot of work in these areas already at their hotspots. And if we haven't been, we should be, and we should be doing it now, right now. We shouldn't have to wait for money. A lot of this isn't money-driven, maybe lighting. But getting people together, hey, you have a prostitution problem here? Are you witnessing certain gang bangers standing at this street corner? Why can't we do that now, right now?
We are, and we are. And that's, the point of it is really to focus in, we keep talking about the 02, the 03, the 05 areas, correct? Where we, where we hear that these are the biggest issues, but it's not the whole area. So, we need to pinpoint where these areas are now and figure out what exactly is going on in those areas. There's going to be a champion in that neighborhood who's going to speak with us. We need to find them. There's gonna be a business owner in that area who's gonna talk to us. We need to find them. And we need to empower them to continue to conversate with us. There's 198 officers and there's 100,000-plus people that live in this city. How do we tap into them and empower them to, to say, this is our neighborhood? We just left from a shooting. And people, when we were out there, were calling me over and saying, that's the place that did the shooting from. That's what we need from this community, and they're starting to step up.
I, I understand that, Chief, but this has happened before with people participating and providing information to the police department. This didn't just start tonight.
Correct.
If we need to have meetings, let's start getting those meetings convened in these hotspot areas without having to wait for federal largess or whatever to do this.
Well, we're not waiting for the money. We're having these. We have hired a community engagement coordinator who's out getting these things organized to find the people that are in those areas. That is happening.
We're, we're gonna go find people in neighborhoods. I would say your council members ought to know who those people are in those neighborhoods already, who are, who are players. And I think you need to utilize the expertise that your elected leaders have on what's going on as well. We don't need to go on a search for where the problems are in this community. We already know. We know who the community's leaders are. We know where the churches are. It just seemed like a highly theoretical construct, what you were doing. And I just wanna get down to business now. That's what I'm saying.
I, I understand that. I think we need to buy into those communities.
And I think we already know who can help us in this regard, so. And I think we've had this knowledge for some time. We need to concentrate our resources. Thank you.
Any other, thank you, Chief. Any other questions for Director Powers? Any other infrastructure questions, comments? Thank you, Director. Um, Manager, can you move on?
Sure. Um, so for next year, what we would propose is we move into neighborhood revitalization was another million dollars for demolition and lot clearance, $300,000 for the land bank operations, $250,000 for the housing rehab program, $200,000 for the nonprofit capital program, $250,000 for down payment assistance, $100,000 for the neighborhood mini-grants, $150,000 for the utility assistance, and then $203,000 for the staffing. And, you know, obviously, Director Doolin's here, but if there's, you know, if council wants to add or move monies around in these areas, you know, we would certainly entertain that and, and take that into consideration as we prepare the budget, so.
Well, I mean, the mistake that I think we're making here is, I mean, I support adding utility assistance and filling that gap between the 60% and the 80%, but I think that we make a mistake by taking it away from housing rehab because when you think about addressing the problem and not just putting a Band-Aid on it, when we're paying somebody's utilities, it's a temporary, it's, it's, it's a need that's being addressed, but it's also a Band-Aid to where some of the problems are. If somebody has a weak roof, if somebody has, uh, windows with energy loss, when you have energy loss in a home, your utilities are likely to go higher. So, by taking from housing rehab, that could address some of those other issues, I think we're, we're, um, not addressing some of the housing rehab needs that we have in our community. So, that's, that's one recommendation that I would have, that we don't, that we, we retain the housing rehab at the same level that we had it and still have the utility, uh, program, utility assistance program. Counselmember Ruckregal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, city manager, you asked for maybe additions. And earlier today, um, Councilmember Jensen, myself, Councilmember Euler was in a meeting with, um, Director Doolin. And one of the things that came up was, um, and, and I, you know, luckily, we've got, um, kinda history on our side, and Councilmember Jensen served in other capacities here at City Hall. And so, she has, she has, you know, talked with us over years about how the housing court system has, has changed and maybe some differences that have happened and some things that have happened there. And one of the conversations that came up today is really, we, we've got some money for demolitions we've never had, but how do we sort of proactively make sure that we don't get back into this situation? And one of the most important things we can do for our community is make for sure that we have a good housing stock that's quality and affordable for our citizens. And like to be able to, and, and I think, you know, this is not a, a one-person idea. We talked about it from the meeting today. Could we talk about a pilot program where we set some money aside to be, bring in somebody on the legal council who can just deal with housing court issues and be able to maybe look at how we revamp that or, or look back to some of those, um, past ideas or some new ideas that we need to be able to do? To be able to make for sure that we are giving the highest quality housing stock to our citizens, um, some of them who are the most vulnerable, and to be able to, to pull that together.
I, absolutely. I think we could, we could certainly look at, at, at that as a, as another option or another program to build into this, to look at that. I think that, that, um, you know, housing court is the intersection between legal and community development, and I think both departments would certainly welcome that. I'm, I don't know if you guys wanna add anything to that from that end?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think one of the, the things I'm excited about in community development is our ability to address the demolition backlog that we've had. And we, if you drive in the neighborhoods, you see us actually making progress. And over the next two years, with the amount of money we have budgeted, I think we can make a significant, uh, impact on those that are abandoned and vacant. But I think the important step is, how do we utilize these funds to ensure that three or four years from now, we don't have another, we're, we're stopping the flow of there? And I think we've made a lot of really positive strides with our land bank. Um, and I think the land bank is an excellent, um, example of really good collaboration between our department and legal department. Um, you know, we knew that starting a land bank, uh, could create a significant, uh, amount of additional work for our legal department. So, when we were applying specifically for the grant, uh, we put in there to provide them some legal staff to help fund that. And we've been able to bring multiple, more properties to demo court than we have in the past. We've been able to do more abandonment, uh, and that just keeps growing and growing. So, I think, uh, the history has been set of, of us being able to collaborate really well. And I think, you know, we have some, uh, really good partnerships with some other municipalities across Illinois, uh, bringing forth hope, some, uh, state legislative changes that give us even more power and, and more ability to do things. Um, but I think a lot of that will, uh, unfortunately, be placed, uh, an additional burden on our legal department to have to do more work than we've ever asked them before, to specifically go after, uh, some of these fines that we have in place and, um, appreciate, um, Corporation Council's team and, and all the work and support they provide us. And I think, uh, we would appreciate, uh, some additional tools and staff, I think, to help them. Uh, and I, I think kind of as a pilot project to show what significant impact we're making. You know, unfortunately, we send someone to the administrative hearing process, they get a $3,000 fine. Um, we need to be able to really go after that, to either file, lean on the property, do a, uh, memorandum of judgment against them, or if all that doesn't work, take them to circuit court and ask the court to impose some penalties specifically related to that. While we can't do that for all our properties, nor would we want to, because we do get a lot of really good compliance through our hearing officer process, and it's a lot less burdensome for those that are willing to cooperate with us. There are some, uh, that don't. We will need to take that process. And, um, I think, you know, we can bring back kind of a, a proposal of what that would look like for, for council to look at, um, in the next few meetings or as part of the budget process for, um, 2023.
That'd be great. And I think that you hit on a word there that I keep hearing tonight a lot with, with programs, really, is collaboration among departments. And we know our legal department does a, a great job. Until recently, when we were able to add positions back in, they were having to do more with less. And so, I, I think by being able to do this as a pilot project and by bringing in some added resources there, that long-term, if we can see the impact of this, that might be able to rebuild in there. So, thank you very much.
Counselmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I perhaps have the wrong idea of the nonprofit capital program. Uh, but maybe I do have the right idea. I don't know. Would you just give us a quickie, uh, Mr. Manager on, or, or Director Doolin, on what, what that is, please?
Uh, yes, sir. So, this is a program we launched specifically this year. Uh, when the American Rescue Plan money was announced, uh, I'm sure many of you got calls from nonprofit organizations, uh, asking if, if they could get some, some of those funds to help with theirs. And I think after staff and council met last year, we decided that, that, that we're not looking to fund specific programs with that money. We wanted them to make lasting capital improvements to their building, to have a long, uh, history of, in our community and going forward. So, we launched it this year. Uh, we had brought that to council. Um, it's $200,000 of American Rescue Plan money, but then we, uh, stack that with $250,000 of community development block grant money. Uh, so, this year and next year, it's $450,000. Um, and, and we've, we brought the first group and we'll just launch the program again next year. So, we'll be able to provide about seven nonprofits with $75,000 each for capital needs, whether it's new roofs, uh, new vans, new equipment, uh, things specifically related to their building that will have a lasting effect on them.
Uh, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Counselmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Doolin, um, you know, I, would it be very hard for you to say, to give us a report back on, you know, how, how did we, how many units were demolished? And where were they demolished? If, because the whole idea is to clean up the unused spots so that we can curb the violence. So, I probably had joined this bandwagon lead, but I just, I'm very curious to know that what are the properties that you planned, you demolished in 2022? And what are the proposed in 2023? And not only that, anything like, for example, if you, if you go back to the neighborhood mini-grants program, we, it would be very ideal for us to really show who got it? And is there a continuum of the grant or one-time grant? I probably don't know, and most of us may not know that as well. So, I don't know if it is too hard, but I would really appreciate if you can, you know, ju- just give, give a ballpark of where it, where you, where the demolitions happened. Even we will appreciate the fact that, oh, we spent this money and this is, this has been done. So, I don't know if it is fair, but-
Yeah, uh, yes, sir. That's easy to, uh, the land bank actually, uh, has all that data, so we can get it out to council, uh, tomorrow.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Manager, do you have the direction you need within the area?
I think so. If, if, you know, I guess, if there's no objection, we'll work towards beefing up the housing rehab program and we'll work on another, um, pilot project for the, the legal, uh, community development housing court side and, and bring that back as part of the budget. We'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Great. Um, moving on, um, on the economic development side, we, we have, uh, again, in, in this area, uh, recommended, uh, $2.4 million of, uh, funding. Um, and what we have included, and, and Assistant City Manager Kimberly Richardson is here as well. Um, we have recommended $600,000 in small business support, $600,000 for our very well-received commercial rehab, uh, and, uh, commercial facade improvement program, $300,000 for assistance to the unemployed. We'd like to set aside $300,000 to work with the Racial Justice and Equity Economic Development and Jobs Commission. They are committee. They have been looking at three specific areas in the city. They have been focused on, on, uh, looking at, at how they can assist in workforce development, uh, how they can, that it can help grow minority businesses, and then also how they can invest in our qualified census tracts from an economic development standpoint. So, they've been looking at it, I, I've talked with their, their chair of the, of the subcommittee. They've been looking at it, saying, we'd love to be able to help identify where some of the gaps are. For example, a good, a good example of that could be income support. As people are looking to do workforce development, they may need some additional support as they, as they get a different job, uh, as they improve, that, that they might need childcare expenses or they might need, uh, other, other expenses that would, with transportation expenses that might help them, uh, to get the, the, the training that they need. So, looking at that as one aspect of how they might be able to come together and, um, and provide some of that gap identification for us, where they're seeing the needs as they've been talking in the community as well. So, and it also, I think, helps to integrate, uh, you know, some of this spending back in with the Racial Justice and Equity Commission and what they're, the work that they're doing uh, since we've tasked them with so much. And then, uh, the last was another new program, which is the Tourism Reserve Fund. Uh, the, the American Rescue Plan Act does specifically call out tourism as being one of those affected industries that we can help to support. Uh, we lost over $600,000, uh, of Tourism Reserve Fund dollars because HRA tax revenues declined in 2020 and 2021. And so, what we'd like to do is just recapitalize our Tourism Reserve Fund, working with the CVB, working with the members of the city council that are on the, the Tourism Reserve Fund. Uh, and that includes Councilman Ruckregal and Councilman Velpula. They serve on that. Uh, but those are, those are those tourism-related activities that come into our community. It could be community events, they could be, uh, events at the Civic Center, or they could be other events that are coming that are non-Civic Center-related. And it's really looking at, at trying to have, and marketing the city of Peoria, obviously, so that we get, you know, people into, into hotel beds. And so, we'd like to, to recommend that we put some of that money back into the TRF as well. Um, this would go a long way towards helping them. I think over the, the two-year period between the Tourism Reserve Fund and, uh, the monies that, that the CVB didn't receive, it was about 1.1 million dollars that they didn't get. They did get some money back from the state. Um, but, but these are dollars the city retains, they're HRA tax dollars, and then we allocate those out to those community-based events.
This is different from the, uh, the Visitors Bureau?
We, we have a separate contract with the convention as Visitors Bureau. Uh, we're not recommending that we give the CVB any money directly. This would be money that would come into the TRF fund and would be allocated. And, and it's a partnership between the CVB and the city.
Got it. Thank you.
And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Counselmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Going through this, uh, entire presentation, uh, $36 million don't last like it used to.
No, sir.
I'm like, wow, this is, uh, going pretty, pretty fast. But in all seriousness, though, um, when you think about these funds, and these are generational- funds, how can we get the best investment? So just an overall comment that I would like to see from the city is us taking advantage of our most precious asset, and that's the river. And when you think about, you know, how we can invest in, whether that is wayfinding signage, whether that is, you know, making it a place-making destination where people want to come and participate and support programming and concerts and festivities, that's how we're going to really generate a lot of tourism dollars and sales tax, and really grow and really create economic development in our downtown area. So I know that's a little off-topic, but I just really wanted to say that as, you know, are there any investment opportunities that we can really look to really just grow our riverfront, really make it that destination that it could be?
Thank you, Councilman. There are a couple of things that are going on. You know, we are working right now, we have a funded capital project on doing downtown wayfinding that would include the riverfront and include all of what we traditionally think of as the warehouse district and the central business district, the riverfront, up to the hospital areas. So that, looking at trying to do some wayfinding in there. That project, I think we have a half a million dollars budgeted for that program. So, and then we also have been doing the riverfront planning from bridge to bridge, from the Bob Michael Bridge to the Murray Baker Bridge, looking at what we could do to redo the riverfront. And so we've been doing some of the planning work on that project, waiting on a $15 million grant from the state that's been identified but hasn't been released yet. And so that's something that we're hopeful. I think we'll be coming back to council with some of the recommendations of what the final designs, at least that we've put together so far, have looked like. We've taken that back to the stakeholders, and they've got some suggestions that we need to update and make some changes to, and then we want to bring it back to you for consideration for the entire council. But that is something that's in process that we're working on. Fingers crossed that we'll see some of that money coming forward and getting released from the state.
Well, I'm optimistic. You just got a grant yesterday, so I'm optimistic. But no, I appreciate that update. And again, just, you know, I attended the India Fest Sunday and Soul Fest last weekend, and you just think of the potential that our riverfront really has, and that really can just really be that game changer for the city of Peoria. And hopefully, we can take care of some of these, utilize some of these once-in-a-generation funds to really take us to the next level. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Jensen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a follow-up question on the Tourism Reserve Fund. How much did we used to fund annually?
So the, I should have brought my notes. We fund, there's $90,000 a year that goes into, there's three buckets. There's the civic center-related fund, the non-civic center-related, and then the marketing. There's $90,000 that goes into the non-civic center-related funds. There's $60,000 that goes into the civic center-related activities. And then the remaining goes into the marketing of the city of Peoria and marketing efforts. And that has been traditionally about $230,000 to $330,000 a year, depending on how much is generated in HRA tax. And so this $450,000 would replenish the funds, and it would allow us to start to be able to really promote Peoria more, try and encourage people to come here and spend money here, and not be at really dangerously low levels of funding for those activities. We've curtailed all marketing activities because we just don't have the funds right now for the Tourism Reserve Fund.
Okay. And so right now, what's the fund at?
Right now, the fund balance is roughly, we just had a meeting Friday, about, was it about $180,000 between the three funds that we have?
And then what is it typically, like, I can't remember. Typically, what's the fund amount for a year?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that question again?
So typically, isn't that how much is in there for a year? About $200,000, or is it more?
No, traditionally, it's been right in that area of the $400,000 a year going into the TRF fund, is what we traditionally get, right in that area there.
And that serves just Peoria, right? Or is that the one that...
It's just Peoria.
Okay.
Because the CVB gets a state grant that covers marketing the region, and these are dollars, and we've made it very clear, and they're very good about it, that they know that these are dollars that go just to promote Peoria.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't know if it is related or not, but let's say, this question is for the manager. Can we use any of these funds to, you know, the whole idea of economic development is to bring businesses? And I've been on the council for one year, one year. How do we actually sell Peoria to Peoria? That's my first question. We never had that, you know, we don't really sell ourselves well, regardless of what you have. It's my personal opinion, you have Downtown Development Corporation, you have Greater Peoria Economic Development Corporation, we have our own economic development. But I don't know how we are going to sell Peoria to Peoria first, and then sell Peoria outside. So I'm biased with the healthcare. So let's say the healthcare is going to come, but who is going to sell Peoria to the healthcare industry? I have no idea. I tried looking into it, I didn't find any. And the ultimate objective of the fiscal recovery fund, funding objectives, is to replace lost public sector revenue and retain and get more jobs. So if, for example, for people to come to Peoria, you need to say, this is what Peoria offers for you, outsider. How are we doing it? I haven't seen it, and I don't know whom to ask or where to ask for this.
Well, the Chamber of Commerce has prepared those types of marketing videos to try and sell people on coming and moving to Peoria. They've put together portraying spouses, marketing materials for people that are coming in, that are moving to the region. The CVB has done a number of marketing efforts over the years to try and promote Peoria, not only externally, but also internally to our Peorians. So they have done those efforts. We are, you know, have been working here on some other promotional videos through a company that's really no cost to us, through CGI, that is the name of the company, that will be promoting Peoria, that we'll be putting on our website. So those efforts are underway right now to continue to try and market those efforts, some of which, because of the HRA tax dollars, we haven't had the ability through the CVB to do some of that marketing this past year. So replenishing this fund allows us to go out and do more of that.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. And Ms. Assistant Manager Kimberly Richardson is also here at the podium, in case you have any questions for her. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple things. First, speaking to part of the point that Councilor Velpula just spoke to, it seems to me that our first effort at attracting capital, jobs, et cetera, is internal. There's plenty of capital in Peoria, Illinois. There are plenty of people in need of work in Peoria, Illinois. There's plenty of expertise in Peoria, Illinois. We seem to model ourselves very often, just like other cities, other towns. Oftentimes, those cities or those towns are not growing either. And to have us stand out among our citizens first, it would seem to me to be more in line with what we should be doing. I hear from various people that, oh, we need to get more people from the outside to come in here, more capital, and I'm, of course, in favor of that. But if we organically are growing, that's going to attract those others. You know, I think we oftentimes concentrate on this a little bit backwards. There, and you and I have talked about this, Mr. Manager, a time or two, there are things we can do here that will make headlines here, and they don't cost too much money. And it is something that our citizens would see and believe, you know, et cetera. And yeah, maybe people from the outside, which is fine, but our constituency is our people now and our businesses now. And I just don't think, I think we take them for granted, and then we go out and try to find some giant employer. I'm not, I don't mean against giant employers, but, you know, we've got, we need to tap into what we have in this community. Secondly, I've seen the riverfront plan, and I think it looks very nice, et cetera. We own property down there, not just land. We own the Gateway Building, we own, we own that fountain down there. We own all those bricks down there that are crumbling. And if we need grants to take care of the stuff that belongs to us, I think we're in deep trouble. We don't, we do not take care of some of those things. We have a heck of a time taking care of our streets, we have, you know, we have a heck of a time taking care of what we do own. But we own that stuff, too. And that, those are fabulous assets that no one else has. And yet, you go down there, and the fountain is full of muck, and the bricks are crumbling. And I have a good time down there, I go to things down there. But, and the Gateway Building needs some things, and we, if we are only going to address that when we get a grant coming in, I think we're not doing our job. Sorry for all the complaints, but...
Councilman, we have this year budgeted $400,000 or $389,000 for work around the Gateway Building, including the bricks, including that work. So that's a project that Public Works has in the budget to address. Those were funds that were approved by you as part of the budget process. So that was included. We also have, I think there's another $280,000 for the area where the Spirit of St., or Spirit of St., the Spirit of Peoria was parked, and the dock in that area there, to make some of the improvements to that space as well. So that was additional funds, two capital projects that Public Works has to work in that area right now. In addition, that's regardless of when those grants come to do any of the other work on the riverfront.
Was that outside of ARPA funding? Was that just in the general budget?
Those are dollars that are part of the capital budget that council approved.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Assistant City Manager Richardson, just a clarifying question. When we look at small business support, small business innovation, and some of the other assistance that are listed there, is this similar to what we've done with the RISE grants?
Correct. We combine those efforts into one program, and this year, we're kind of evaluate how, looking into 2023, oh my goodness, can't say that too fast enough, looking into 2023, we want to make sure we're being very intentional. So we want to make sure that when we say small business support, identifying what additional support we need, that we need to look at beyond just what the RISE program offered this year.
So the goal would be to repeat the program for the next three years?
I would say we want to modify, because the recovery aspect of the program, which is what we just allocated funds for, I think we're beyond that request. I think now we're looking at businesses who are trying to expand or continue to build their startup. And so as we evaluate the success of the program, we will then be able to be very more, I would say, targeted in how we want to support the RISE program moving forward. If it, it may be a different iteration of the type of program the RISE was this year. It just depends upon how we see the response from the community, the business community in regards to the funding we receive.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Are there any objections to the staff recommendations we have here for economic development? Please proceed, Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last areas are violence reduction, health equity, and administration. We have, again, in 2023, proposed $735,000 for violence prevention, the $500,000 for hotspot intervention. There's about $85,000 for administration, for a position in the police department. We have the $600,000 with the county for health equity, and then marketing and administration costs of $170 budgeted. So that's what we would recommend in those areas, and I'm happy to discuss that with council at this point in time.
Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually am seeing a recurring, what do you call, administrative costs across the spectrum for every, like, for infrastructure, we are having an administrative, administrative cost for 182. The neighborhood, we have 250. And then there is a, in the violence reduction, we have two administration costs, like administration...
Let me clarify, this is, in the violence, it's just one staff person, it's $85,000. The other marketing and administration cost is overall, that's for actually a position in the finance department, again, coordinating all of these activities and making sure the dollars are spent. And then finding the person has been a challenge this year, so that position hasn't been hired. And then just the marketing as a placeholder for us to, if we have marketing of programs that we adopt, that we want to put out and spend some additional dollars to market, that's what those dollars are for there. So that's the $170,000 that's listed for that position. And unfortunately, the finance director, I don't know if you want to talk about the challenge of trying to fill the position, but that's one of those issues that we've had, so.
Right. Before you answer, let's say if you sum all the costs that are associated with administration for two years, we are actually totaling to close to a million dollars. I don't know if I'm right in that.
No, that's correct. And so we have three positions that we've hired in community development using ARP dollars in order to help to manage the support of that throughput of those programs. We have a position that we've recommended in economic development to help to provide some of the administrative support there. We've had two positions that are recommended in Public Works. These were all part of the budget process that we, when we presented that to you last year, you adopted, that will provide that administrative support for the Public Works team. And then we have the one position in finance as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no questions.
No, I would just add, in terms of, you know, filling the position, it hasn't been an easy one to fill. We do actually have applications in the hopper that I'm reviewing right now, so I am hopeful that we will get the position filled. It is a position that I do really need to assist me with tracking these expenditures and making sure we're staying in compliance with the dollars. And so I am hopeful that we'll have that position filled in the next month to two months.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Great. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Manager, I asked you a couple months ago to bring forward some ideas, which you and I have shared offline, about support of family formation. I have a prejudice about the violence prevention effort in that I think we're going to have things that will work temporarily in these neighborhoods, but this, and I'm all for violence prevention. However, this, I believe, is a symptom, and I believe we need to go after some, I don't have any problem with going after the symptom. We have to. But to go to causes of these things, I think, is, will do us long-term more good, but it's harder to do. One of the things that a lot of statistics show us is that homes where young men grow up... One of the things that a lot of statistics show us is that, um, homes where young men grow up without fathers, um, uh, tend to be, uh, sources of an outsized amount of crime and violence in our society. Um, if that woman who has, who is pregnant or who has a child or two and is on public assistance, if she decides to get married, there's a terrific penalty, financial penalty for her to do that. And furthermore, if, uh, that couple starts to make more money, there's a penalty for that. There's a gentleman by the name of Art Laffer, who said years and years ago that the poor in America are in the highest tax brackets there are. I would like to have a pilot program, Mr. Manager, or we can work out a pilot program, where we can indemnify these young women who would, who are on public assistance, who would like to marry and to, to forego this, this terrific penalty that they would see if, if they were married or if their income began to go up. Um, we cannot take care of this whole thing, but we may be able to start showing that coming at one of the roots of our current violence problems, um, uh, may, may pay off for us. And I would like to see something like that brought here, not, not ready to go, but brought here for discussion.
I, I have to respond and I'm compelled to respond because I worked with what's now DHS, Department of Human Services. It used to be the Illinois Department of Public Aid. I worked there for several years as a public aid caseworker. I, I served on welfare reform commissions for the state of Illinois. I know about the structures that you're talking about that can be, um, that can inhibit, um, unions, that can inhibit marriage, that can inhibit, uh, sometimes education, that can inhibit sometimes work. The city of Peoria does not control the state of Illinois programs like public assistance. It's a matter of working with the state of Illinois, the legislators, the Department of Human Services. We can't fix this, uh, Councilman. We can be influencers. Uh, we can, we can, um, try to work together. We can maybe form some committees or commissions, but we can't design a program that's going to fix that. That's, that's my view. That's my view from being in the system, uh, on both sides of the system. At, at one time I was a public aid recipient. I was a single mother, uh, that was a welfare recipient at one time.
Madam Mayor, I, I agree with you.
I, I'm just saying, the manager can't fix this. He, uh, I, people have tried to fix this for a long time, but I really, I, I'm not opposed to the conversation. I'm not opposed to the effort, but I'm just saying to put that burden on the city council is, I think is the wrong direction.
Madam Mayor, I, I agree with you. We are not going to overturn the state of Illinois or the federal government and these programs. What I'm suggesting is if we did a pilot, we could show over time, a pilot, it would be small. We would, we could show, we might be able to show over time that programs like this, uh, can influence or change some of these programs that keep people down, keep people trapped. Um, and this I think is part of the problem that we end up seeing exhibited in, uh, behaviors in our community that are harmful, not only to us, but to the perpetrators as well. I'm not saying we're, we're going to stop it. What I'm saying is let's see if we can prove our case a little bit.
You can't do it in a vacuum. It can't be done in a vacuum.
We'd have to have money. It would take money. We'd have to indemnify however many of these that we would decide, we'd have to indemnify them. That would take some money. I mean, it wouldn't be done. Um, and I, and it may be pie in the sky, but it seems to me that these kinds of programs are very harmful, uh, because they're, you, you get stuck in there and it's very difficult to get out. And we have people who, I mean, it even happens not just with poor people, you know, it, it happens with people who are, are, uh, on social security. And all of a sudden their spouse dies and they start, uh, dating another spouse and they would rather naturally get married, but they don't dare because it's really going to cut their income. You know, these are not, okay. So anyway, I would request, Mr. Manager, that we, um, have something to look at and be happy to, we've talked about it already, but I'd be happy to work with you on, on bringing a few ideas forward.
Yeah, at, at some level of an income support program would be eligible under the American Rescue Plan Act. How it's structured, I mean, this would be in addition to any other, um, um, you know, benefit that would be received. I think the, the concept would be that as someone was moving where they might see their benefits being diminished, that we would provide that level of support to, so that they don't see that, that benefit diminished. It's going to take some time for us to structure a program and bring that back. Uh, that, that's why it's been somewhat silent. But if, I mean, if there's no objection from council, we'll continue to work on that and come and try and bring something forward that might address that. I just, I'm not sure what that dollar amount is or what that might look like yet. Cause it's still, you know, we're still starting to look at what those programs are.
Well, I would, I would want to, before too much effort is put into that, I would want some council input on, on where the council, you know, how the council feels about that. Councilmember Jensen?
Well, I mean, that was basically what I, what my comments are. I don't know if, I mean, I, I know you've just talked about it a little bit. I don't know if I could support such a program and using our funds for that. So that, so I kind of caution whether we should go down that road or not too.
Councilmember Grab?
You know, we put together a list of items we would like to discuss with our state lawmakers. State lawmakers can be very helpful, so can federal lawmakers to what happens in Peoria. But they, quite correct, need to be onboard. The state government is quite capable of, uh, funding pilot, uh, programs, like the co-responder program, which is involved the police department and mental health professionals. And so I think we need to make that case, Councilman Kelly, to our state lawmakers. Everybody in the world knows, going back to Daniel Patrick Monahan, what the problems have been and what's contributed to the problems that we have not only in Peoria, but all over the United States of America. And I'm sure our state lawmakers have seen some of these same studies. So I think this needs to be put on our list. Just last time we met, Councilman Kelly, because of your help, we're going to have a resolution coming back as relates to red light cameras where we're beseeching them to please hear us. And I'm sure that we need to put this on our list as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I definitely understand, um, where you're coming from, Councilman Kelly. I think the challenge for the manager to bring forth is, um, what historical data are you going to be able to find that can demonstrate, although we know there are certain circumstances where people may decide not to get married to maintain their benefits, um, but how do you quantify that? Who's reporting that? You know, that's more subjective in my opinion. And so I think it would be really tough for the manager to come to us with a report to demonstrate that there's really teeth to this problem. Um, and so I think that's why I would have a hard time supporting it. Um, now there are other things out there right now. There is a mayor's coalition right now for basic guaranteed income that is really getting a lot of traction in various municipalities around the, the country. Is that something that we may want to explore? Maybe, maybe not, but that is something that we can maybe see what's working in some other cities and then consider maybe bringing that to Peoria and then maybe developing a criteria around that. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other comments, questions?
So, Madam Mayor, I, I, just in kind of wrapping everything up, I think that if we were to, um, add about $250,000, which is roughly the, the housing rehab plus a pilot project on the, on the, the, I'm thinking of a staff person for the, the housing court, um, in 2023 and then again in 2024. And, and then if you look at carrying another 2.4 million for economic development, uh, you have the health equity fund, which we've committed for 2024 and then 2025. If we did another 1.3 million for violence reduction, I think it would leave us with roughly about $2.6 million for infrastructure, um, in 2024. And what it would, what that would do, it, it would mean we'd have about $9.8 million left to allocate in 2024. So what we can do from the, the staff side is we'll go back as we start to prepare the, the budget. We'll work, you know, these, these dollars in. And then that still leaves council with nearly $10 million to allocate for the, the remaining two years of the program.
Okay, that sounds good. Councilmember Rodrigo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just, I think, um, as, as we continue these conversations, City Manager, and I think as we start to look at the budgeting, um, as we go into later in the year, one of the things that I know we see in different pockets of the budget for the, maybe for the general or for this, is the number of grants and, and I think we do a really good job on being able to maximize the investment of our dollars. Um, could you bring back to the council maybe a, a list of what's included in the general and the ARP dollars for grants that are out among, um, for our citizens in, or our businesses for 2022 and that would be there or proposed to be there for 2023? I, I think that we would see that totality there and the array that, that are there. It might also help us as we continue our conversations.
We, we'd be happy to put that list together for you.
Great, thank you.
Good. So are we at policy considerations?
We, we are. If there's, if there's any other considerations that you want us to think about or any other suggestions, we'd be happy to, to take them, uh, and go forward with that.
Well, I think we went through each section, each category and, uh, got some agreement there. Uh, one thing that I did hear, I think it came from Councilman Velpula, is, is there any funding to do more selling of Peoria? So I, I think that that's a consideration, um, if, um, that's your recommendation, Councilman. Oh, sorry about that. There you go.
That would be really helpful because, uh, you know, it's, we, if, I, for me, it, it looks like the time has come for us to rebrand ourselves. It could be any brand, but we need to sell what we got, really show that we are prepared for the next things. Rather than spreading ourselves too thin, we need to be more innovative. And then that would be only possible if we can showcase what we got, how we are, and the beauty of Peoria is what people needs to see. So I, I haven't seen that before, even though manager said we have several things that are in place. I haven't seen it before in my 14 years of stay in Peoria. So that would be really, really helpful. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, just want to comment that I agree with everything that we've talked about so far. Um, I do have kind of an idea that has come to me today as I sat through the landlord meeting this morning and we talked about some of the concerns in there and then discussion tonight. I've got the basic framework of maybe a pilot program for a neighborhood infrastructure type thing. I'd like to flush out with you and Director Doolan. And over the next few days, I know we've got a one-on-one Friday, but just wanted to bring that up that I think that, you know, it's now would be a good time to talk about it and maybe have something to come back with later.
Do you have a price tag on it?
No, no idea. Just formulating a concept at this point, so.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I, very good discussion, everyone. I, I think that, uh, I think we can move forward, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I, I think we need a motion to, uh, receive and file. Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Grab?
Uh, one more thought. Um, we are well aware of the fact that we're the recipient, uh, here in Peoria, just like other municipalities in the country, of historically large sums of money to be spent, um, to help the people in our community. And I think that any discussion that this money is free is erroneous. I can't say that with enough emphasis. This is not free money. We all pay federal tax dollars. And it's imperative that we monitor which programs we're funding are working so that we will retain these in future budgets after this money goes away. We must do a quality assessment as to how many of these dollars basically are wasted dollars or did not, uh, accrue the benefit we thought it would. And, and do a cost benefit analysis so that we are much better informed as to how we put together budgets when we get back to our more normal Malthusian scarcity years. Because these are, these are oddball years.
Yep.
And, and we better make the most of it and we better be ready to assess which of these allocations are really being cost effective. And that can shape how this council and future councils will put together with management budgets in the future. And, you know, it's, it's such an elemental observation. I mean, one doesn't need to be very bright to get it, but, but we do need to understand that. Because I have never seen such profusion of money. Of course, I haven't, I know you may think so, but I didn't live through the pandemic of 1918. So I haven't, I have never sat in this chair and seen this amount of money coming in to our city, nor the rest of the municipalities in the country and states. So we really need to monitor carefully how this money is working to help the people in our community whom we're here to serve. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, if I could, to, to follow up on what Councilman Grab said.
Yes.
The, the position in finance is a management analyst position with the intent being that they would start some of that program evaluation workforce. So that's a, it's a key position that we need to make sure that we hire so that, that we can do that.
Excellent. Madam Clerk, we didn't have to approve any minutes today?
No, not today, because it's a special session.
Okay.
But we do, um, need to close the policy session versus a receive and file.
Yes, right. We have a motion to receive and file. Please cast your ballots. Is Councilmember Rigginbox still by phone? Okay. Motion passes unanimously. It's not showing, but it passes. Okay, Madam Clerk?
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council and I believe we have one card.
Okay, we have, uh, Mr. Charles Williams?
Good afternoon. How you doing? Uh, first of all, 6911 North Kemmler Drive, Peoria, Illinois. I'm, I'm a. I'm, I'm a little upset. I hit a pothole on a dahl tree up there with the bank going in on Pine Hill Park on my Sunday night. Tore up a rim on his car and busted a tire. Property manager, you guys are city of Peoria. Property man that owned this place like Joseph Brothers, Hy-Vee and whatever, they're supposed to fix this property. I don't suppose to be with my VA where I can't go to appointments in Wisconsin to leave because somebody don't fix the property. It's not fair to me to take it to the lighthouse and pay $420 or whatever and say, "Mr. Williams, we, we don't care what your problem is, whatever, but it need to be done." Y'all doing a good job on the roads. I'm happy with that, but I'm kind of mad as a wet hen what happened to me there. And another thing, if, you know, I'm glad I'm here tonight. I heard so much. You know, you guys got a little education. I got education. I got two DD-14, two of them. I'm just proud of that. One Army National Guard, one U.S. Air Force. And yes, I'm tough. I like people, but I ain't nothing, I'm, I'm very hard to get along. But I like you and I'm straightforward. You talk about crime, the police chief, I'm glad. That stuff y'all talk about at the hotspot, you need some buses here and get out here on the boots and the grind and stop all that mess. You don't need no money for no police. Police need to get their job done and do it. If you got to shoot somebody or whatever, do it. That's a police job. It's not a daycare. And that's what I see in cities. All we do is make excuses about what to do. Get it down, like Chuck Graves said, now get it down. And the police chiefs don't need to be going around what they're going to do. Operation, you do thing at Operation Command. But you guys have to come together. City have to make community better. You want to love Peoria. You don't want me to go away with a pothole in a Hy-Vee parking lot, done tore up somebody's car. Mr. Williams is upset tonight. I'm upset with you guys because y'all know better. I see Jansen here and Sid and Chuck Graves, and I know two of them. You guys are senior people. And Mr. Glover, you, Kelly, you're right. I never been on welfare. I work in the peanut farm down there in Georgia. Tough. Education. Get up in the morning and get it. But I want to say something to you guys. You got money. You won't bring nobody here if you don't get this city right. And police chief got to do a good job. Got to communicate better. Police must communicate good. Police ain't no daycare center. I'm not a daycare guy. Get the boots on the grind, chief, and do your job. And I'm not here to hold no hand with nobody. Don't, because look, I, I leave out here. If you're mad with me, fine. You don't want to speak to me, that's okay. But tomorrow, I'm going to get up in the morning and pray for you and pray for the troops and keep moving. And if you want to get ahold of me, get over me. But I tell you what, I ain't happy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Madam Clerk.
We are at executive, executive session.
Counsel.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we need an executive session pursuant to five ILCS 120, 2C1 to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body.
I need a motion to go into exec, moved by Councilmember Euler, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Now I need a motion to adjourn, moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Jackson. And please cast your ballots. Councilmember Velpula left. Okay, so motion passes unanimously. Not counting Councilmember Velpula.